We're meeting as the planning board, so I'll call this meeting of the Stockridge Planning Board to order. Thank you all for joining. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the last meeting on September 21. Can I have a motion to approve them?
Those looked good. I would move to approve the minutes.
Second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Can Jennifer, would you? Do we still have to call the rule or what's the rule now?
You can just say, "I, Kate, I, Bill, I, Carl," and go around the room like that.
Okay.
I'll start. Hi, Kate.
Carl, you said yes?
Hi, Carl. Yes.
I'll say yes.
Hi, Marie.
Hi, Wayne. You're muted, but I saw your hand go up.
Me?
Hi, Nancy.
No, no, Gary.
Oh, Gary.
And where's Wayne?
He already did it.
He's on.
We're all set.
He did? Okay. So the minutes are approved. Thank you.
Gary, did you know you're on mute? Yes, he does.
It may be deliberate. So next item is the four Cove Lane special permit. I think most of us did a site visit last week. And let's see, I'm looking.
I saw Mike Coolidge there.
Mike, do you want to present this?
Sure.
Please welcome.
Welcome. Thank you.
Are you going to share out the plan?
I'm happy to if somebody can free me up to do that.
You have permission if you need it.
You do.
Yeah. And Bill, while Mike shares out the plan, can you just introduce the team, people who are here?
The planning board?
Members of the team representing the applicant.
Oh.
Our team, Kate.
Mike.
Mike can do it.
Oh, sure. Yeah. Beth Goodman.
Hi.
Is present Beth. Pam, we expect to be here. I don't see her yet, but Pam Samler will be joining us shortly, I hope. Um, just bear with me. I'm not getting all the.
I see Carrie's name. I think she's present, but not showing her video. On the participant list.
Oh, there's Pam. Yep. So Pam, Carrie, Beth, and myself, Mike Coolidge with Berkshire Engineering on behalf of Ms. Bacon.
Thanks, Mike.
Sorry, I'm Carrie. It took me a little while to get this thing all figured out, but I'm here. I met most of you on my property. Sorry.
Welcome, Carrie.
Okay, Mike, go ahead, please.
Okay. So you folks have kind of seen the site. There's an existing single-family structure on the site now. And I kind of try and show you on my screen here what's what the the existing, this line represents the existing perimeter of the structure. And the other, I guess, the other existing conditions on the site, there's dry lanes, stone patios that were installed a number of years ago. There's an existing boat dock that extends out into the water and distance and an existing gravel driveway. The site is served by town sewer, which this line represents the town sewer. There's a pump station here at the edge of Cove Lane. And they're also served by, on site well. Those are the major infrastructure components. There's an overhead power line that comes in from the north through the, kind of through the tree line from Cove Lane. The proposal is to demolish the existing structure and replace it with a new one. And the new footprint is this outline you see here. It's about 184 square feet bigger than the existing footprint. The kind of the other site components, the dry lane stone patio, this would remain, this remains. We're showing a little bit of a change here just to allow some better access. So this piece of patio would be removed. This is proposed to be new dry lane stone that would provide a little better access to what what is the parking area for the site. And this other dry lane stone patio would remain. There's an existing stepping stone pathway here that no no changes proposed. That would be probably disturbed during construction would have to get redone. The I get the couple of things as far as, so we've been partway through the planning, part of the conservation commission with this. Conservation is generally pretty well satisfied. We think they had asked for a couple of things. Our initial submission showed some plantings here. In response to the conservation commission's request, those have been moved to be kind of in an area here that's currently mostly lawn. So this lawn area would become vegetated. The bank is already vegetated, so there'd be kind of an extension of the an extension of the vegetated bank into the yard area. The other couple of things that came up with the conservation commission, our initial kind of plans for this had been to include a shallow fresh protected foundation, which was would be a concrete foundation. The the commission was concerned with with possible impacts to the wetland. So in response to those concerns, we and I have done a little bit of a rework on the on the structural makeup of the property. And rather than a concrete foundation, this would be on piers. It's on pier. It's on kind of concrete piers now that are very shallow. This would be on helical anchors. So a screw that would support the screw anchors that would support the foundation. What that does is it eliminates the need to get concrete trucks in. It also frees up the entire area. And right now, the area in the house is just about sitting on the ground. It frees up that area for a much larger drainage diaphragm. So that entire area beneath the house would would end up being a just it'd be overlaying with stone, crushed stone and fabric. So that entire area would be available for for infiltration. There'd be one little connection of a bit of a a bit of an umbilical cord, if you will, of utilities that would go from the house down into the ground just to get the water sewer and power down into the ground kind of in a protected fashion. So they don't want to freeze or move or be impacted by the weather. The other sort of site infrastructure, the sewer would be simply reconnected, reconnected to the structure, the same with the water. The water would be reconnected to the structure. And Pam, if you want to jump in on kind of how timing on construction, we think the proposed method is a Pam, you're muted, Pam.
Sorry about that. We would start construction September of, so a year from now, right after Labor Day and be finished by Memorial Day.
So Pam, you talked about panelized.
So, yeah. People, the issue is, is getting up and down this road and trying to keep it to a minimum and to also keep the construction on the site to a minimum. So we are going to build the house to be panelized where the walls are made somewhere else and then they're brought to the site. So the house will pretty much go up in five days. And then, you know, then so basically there's no concrete being poured except for the middle section where the utilities will come through will be in one four by four concrete area. But other than that, the property won't be disturbed and also concrete trucks won't be coming down here and you just won't have that type of exposure. So and the house is going to be built in a style which is very reflective of a cottage Berkshire cut, you know, little bungalow. So very much in keeping with what originally will be there also.
So one of the, as Pam mentioned, one of the concerns of the conservation commission was the, and it may not be relevant, was the how we're going to protect the road and
Now, I'm going to have Elizabeth talk about that. She she's on here, right?
I am on.
Okay.
So the the concern was the construction, but it's only going to be reduced to five days, right?
And that's just to bring the panels in. There will be construction. They'll have to put, you know, they'll have to side the house. We'll have to paint the house. So there will be other things that will be going on. But not heavy trucks is really the big thing that we're trying to avoid here.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. Pam, we talked about whether there was a need to put mats down or anything, but I don't think that there was. I think the determination was the road is wide enough and it's it's sufficient to handle the activity that's coming.
Right.
And we kind of backed off on that with the conservation commission. We would monitor during construction when there are periods of traffic, we would monitor the road. And if it requires attention during construction, we would address it as construction kind of continues on. So we think the commission was the conservation commission with respect to the wetlands concern was satisfied with with that approach as long as somebody was monitoring during construction. And like Pam said, but the major hauling is eliminated by keeping the concrete trucks out of here. So it's
Yeah.
you know, it's going to be smaller vehicles.
Chris May will be the contractor on this job. He and I have done over probably 20 houses on Stockridge Bowl and we both want to make sure that it's left in the same condition that when we start. So.
Any other comments from these consultants to the project or from the owner? Are there any questions from the planning board?
Hi, this is Carrie. I'm the owner and I've spoken and showed the plans to Rebecca Lord and my patent Ed across the street. And I think they're both okay with the design. I haven't spoken to Barbara yet. And I just want to assure the board that my background is in conservation and that I want something that fits the community. So it doesn't, you know, stand out as some an anomaly and something that does the best of preservation for the property as can be done. So I just wanted to assure you because none of you know me. Well, some of you have met me, but anyway, that's my background and that's my impetus and also to create a family home.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Planning board members, questions, comments?
I just had a quick question. So the floor level of the house, is that going to be the same height that the floor level is now?
Yes.
Okay. That's it.
Oh, and Pam, are there are there elevations yet of?
Yes, we have elevations. The board does not ask for them. We can share them with you. Mike, I don't, do you have them or do you want me to?
Yep, I can pull them up if.
That'll be great. Share screen. Thank you.
There you go. Picture's worth a thousand words.
So actually, Carl just went in front of our board, Historic Preservation. So yeah, you can't see my little mouse. Sorry, guys, but
Oh, what do you need, Pam?
Basically, it's okay. I don't need to share screen. You can see what the existing house is and the proposed drawings and then basically, again, a really a little bungalow, probably wood shake siding on the exterior.
Yeah, I can't, my eyes are whatever. I mean, what's the overall height?
It is 25, 11 and one half.
Okay. I'm coming over to check.
I know. You know, sometimes the younger guys in the office, sometimes I try to explain to them, people don't build in height to a half an inch, but they don't you know, they're trying to be exact. So.
No, but to the point, the Historic Preservation Commission did review this project back in October of last year and and, and, and we approved the demolition. So it's, you know, I mean, it's, it's, it's a, I don't know, it's one of these 1939, it's a 1939 bowl cottage. I mean, we've, we've been, we've been approving a lot of, a lot of demolition around the bowl on these, on these structures and and, and, you know, it's, 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 it's kind of, kind of how it is. So there you go. But we signed off on it.
And Mike, your footprint stays within the existing?
Oh, just hang in there. Wait, I'm going to switch back to that.
Mike, okay.
So this, this is the existing footprint, this line. Can you see that line? That's the existing area where we're larger is right kind of along the south and and west and west mall. Otherwise, we're inside the existing.
I believe we're only about 200 square feet bigger than the existing footprint is right now.
Right, about 180, 184 and change.
And no, and no exaggeration of the non-conformity. In other words, the setbacks are met.
Thank you.
Mike, a couple of questions. I've got two plans, site plans and next to me, one from the town, which is dated June 30th, and then the one from the site visit that Pam kindly gave me, which is dated, I think, September 7th. So just, I think we need to be clear about which one we are working here.
So, yeah, so in response to the the conservation commission, we made kind of the modest plan updates to show the this planting area. This planting area is what the conservation commission has requested or indicated that they will hopefully approve. And the other note on here, we know pure foundation. Just to clarify that this will be on piers and not on shallow fresh protected concrete.
Great. Okay. So the, so the September, I think we need to be just note that the September 7th site visit is the one that we're working with.
And then sorry to interrupt site plan. You said site visit.
Site plan.
Yeah, so
if I may, please. My next question is, it sounds like there are no changes, no grading changes.
Not at all.
Right, right.
A flat site.
Yep.
Okay. And Carl covered building height. That's good. There was one, one question I had about in looking at the plan. I noticed it sounds like you've got, it's great that you've got increased possibility for containing runoff underneath the building now. But as I looked at the plan, I see that there's a drip edge that then drains to where is it?
To the north, yeah, to that north.
Next proposed drip edge piping to existing previously approved discharge line. That doesn't really sound ideal. Can you talk a little bit about that discharge line? Is that stormwater just draining right into the lake? Because, you know, that's something we definitely want to avoid.
Yeah, so that's, this line had been approved. This was approved a long while back. This is a drain line that captures perimeter runoff that kind of goes around the house now. That line had been in there. You know, we're not, we're not proposing a new line.
That exists, Kate.
I understand, but it's not ideal to have stormwater runoff going directly into the lake. And I'm asking if there's some way you can especially given the increased drainage that you've now got underneath the property. Is there some way you can address that? So we don't have stormwater running right into the lake, costing taxpayers money down the line.
Excuse me one second. The house is totally open underneath now. So in terms of the runoff from underneath the house, it's going to remain the same.
You don't see any, this is a question.
It's not a foundation underneath the house. So basically, we're retaining that. I'll let Mike continue. Sorry.
I understand that. My question is for Mike, if I may.
Yeah.
Mike, is there any opportunity to improve drainage on this property such that it isn't going directly into the lake?
So the, I guess, the challenge here is, I mean, we kind of all know this site is pretty well surrounded by by a wetland. We were a little bit sad with the difficulty of not having, you know, we just don't have a lot of grade to play with. We didn't want to bring in Phil to raise the house up. You know, so we're kind of, our effort was to try and leave as much of the house as it is, the the runoff that gets to this particular drain that that we're concerned with is the, it's all rooftop. No, it's not. It's not so much the site, the site for the most part infiltrates. The site is very flat. It infiltrates for the most part. We, yeah, if we had opportunities to kind of do some more grading, if we brought in some fill, we could kind of pick this thing up and pitch it to a pitch it to a detention basin or something. We just, in order to do that, we'd have to bring in a whole bunch of fill and kind of make the site what it isn't.
I see. Okay, that's helpful. So you just don't see any way to address that and without sort of compromising the site in another way.
Without changing something significant.
Yeah. Okay, great. Thanks. Thanks, Mike.
And if I could add, I'm looking at your stormwater treatment requirements and it, this, it doesn't violate any of those. It isn't, it isn't asking for any change in those. In other words, you ask for biotention or treatment if it comes from roads or paved areas or metallic roofs and that's not happening.
Any other comments or questions from members of the planning board? If there are butters present, do you wish to make comments or ask questions?
Hi, I'm Rebecca Lord and I think all my questions were answered. I was wondering about the road and and the amount of trucks that would be coming in and timing and that kind of thing. So I'm glad that will be monitored because I know if this year is anything like it might be next year, it's a super wet down there now. And it'd be a drag to be stuck in the mud.
Indeed. Okay, thank you. And Rebecca, I spoke with your sister earlier.
Okay.
I don't know if she's actually here or not, but
I am. Hi, Carl.
Oh, you are. Hi. Well, I will speak for you then.
No, you may, you may.
Well, I mean, it didn't sound like, it didn't sound like
We have a BCD reunion here.
Exactly.
Actually, what I said to Carl was that Carrie is a wonderful neighbor. We love her as a neighbor. She's thoughtful and generous and I think she's putting a lot of thought into into this project and we want to support her.
Yeah, appreciate it immensely.
So are you, are you both comfortable with the building timeline? I mean, we could ask, I mean, I could ask that that be a condition, you know, barring the unforeseen circumstances. But do you feel comfortable with nine September 22 to May 23?
That would work, that would work really well for us, Kate. Yeah.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Is that in the planning board purview? I was just wondering.
We could put it in as a, as a condition and, you know, also put it out there as a possible thing to, to put as a condition. But, you know.
It is specified in the application, the special permit application.
I didn't see it. I just saw a time, I saw a sequence of work plan, but I don't see any time attached to that. Is that in the application, Beth?
No, not the, not the exact time.
Right. So that's, you know, for to other planning board members, that's something that we could potentially put as a, as a, as a condition to this special permit. It shows work sequence on the last page and that's just got
Yeah.
Yeah, there's no dates there.
I see it. They have the right, however, to, to build whenever they want, don't they? Once they've got the permit?
We can put conditions on a special permit.
I know. I know.
This all looks like, it looks very reasonable, but as we've seen before, sometimes things, I don't expect any surprises here, but sometimes there are surprises. So.
If we put that condition on, what happens if for weather reasons or something, they really can't finish it in that time? What does happen?
That's why I said barring unforeseen circumstances.
Okay, so they could come back and ask because there was a big flood or something. Is that, they still could somehow figure it out, right?
That's right.
Um, one question, Bill, I assume that the plantings that they're putting in are all native plantings and someone has okayed them like the ConCon?
So Maria, yeah, the ConCon continued the hearing to to see what the planning board feedback was. And we've got a planting plan in front of them that includes native, non-invasive plantings kind of in that area we show. So, yeah, they're, they're going to have a crack at it before it goes final.
I know they're pretty strict about that.
They are.
I know they look at what it is you're going to plant and that's good.
Nope.
Any other questions or comments? Actually, I suppose I should have asked, it's a little late. Wayne is the clerk to, or Jennifer to read the public notice of this hearing. Can we? Can we? Am I right? Am I right?
Right. Let's skip it.
Yeah, we acknowledge that, that the hearing, that this hearing was publicized in the newspaper and on the town's website. And the plans are available in Town Hall. So I think it's time, unless there are any further questions or comments, to vote on this special permit.
Close the public hearing first.
Vote to close the public hearing first. That's right. And also do I?
And then the board can have any discussion, anything at that point.
Right. And do we, do we do the the required findings before we vote or afterwards?
I would say that you would do that. First, you close the public hearing and then the board can have, you know, talk about conditions. And then you would do your findings.
Okay, let's have a vote to close the public hearing.
I'll move. I'm going to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion about closing the public hearing? Hearing none. I guess we can go around the room raising our hands and saying, all in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye. Gary.
Hi, I'm Marie.
Carl, I'll see you raise your hand. And Wayne, I can't see you raise your hand, but did I hear you say yes?
Aye, Wayne.
Can we, can we close the screen share? There we go. Hi.
There we go. That helps. And all opposed?
Oh, wait, I didn't get a vote.
I'm sorry. I thought this is what happens. I think it's better if Jennifer calls the rule.
I do too.
It just, I'm going to ask in strange orders and I'll forget people and so let's just do it with Jennifer calling the rule from now on until we resume normal activity, whenever that will be. I think the vote was unanimous in favor of closing the public hearing. Correct, Jennifer?
Yes, so.
Okay. Now, do we want to talk about conditions? And the one that's come up is, of course, the schedule, starting in September next year, finishing by Memorial Day or the end of May.
And then I would also just note that we're using the plan dated September 7th because that's where it specifies the helical tiers.
Which is the plan that was submitted to the town.
The site plan submitted to the town is dated June 30th. The site plan that Mike pulled up and that we looked at, at the site visit, is dated September.
7th, I think.
September 7th. So I would specify that that's the site plan that we are approving.
Okay. Is there agreement on those two conditions?
Do we have a copy of it?
I do.
I think, I think Pam handed it out at the site visit.
Oh, okay.
Pam, can you ensure that Jennifer gets a copy? Please?
You're muted, you're muted, Pam.
I think that is really Mike who should submit that to the town.
Whoever, just get a copy of the September 7th plan to Jennifer, please.
Okay.
It's a site plan? Yes, Mike will give that to you.
Okay, thank you.
Looking for.
So, so the conditions are that we're using the September 7th site plan and that the timeline for building will be September 2022 to May 2023, barring unforeseen circumstances.
Right. Any other comments, conditions, questions from the planning board? So I think before we, it seems to me logical, and I should remember this, before we vote, we we make reference to the required findings that have been satisfied, or do I have to read them all? Under section 6.3.6 of the bylaw.
Okay.
Can I, can we incorporate those by reference?
Yes.
Yes.
Any objection? Okay. Then that has happened. Let's proceed to a vote on the special permit. Unless, is there a motion to vote on the special permit?
Yeah.
Move that we approve the special permit for Four Cove Lane as presented tonight by Mike Culey and Pam Sandler and Beth Goodman.
Okay.
Any, is there a second? Oh, yeah, Wayne just seconded. Any further discussion?
Well, inclusive of the conditions that we outlined.
Right. Any further discussion?
I'm sorry, can I just have a point of clarification and your vote will include the findings required by your bylaw?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Jennifer, would you please call the rule?
Sure. Bill?
Yes.
Nancy?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Marie?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Good luck with the project.
I have a question before you guys leave, because I have to do the notice of decision. And so the record title stands in the name of Mary Catherine Winslow. Now is Carrie, Mary Catherine Bacon? Does anybody know?
Carrie, are you still on the call? Carrie?
Elizabeth Goodman, she might know because it goes, it's in care of her.
I'm looking to see if I have the deed in my computer.
Okay.
Carrie got divorced during the time we started the job till now, so.
You could do, if you have evidence that the deed is in Winslow, Mary Catherine Winslow, you can say Mary Catherine Winslow, aka Mary Catherine Bacon.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah, because at the earliest, when I looked at.
Because I know she's using, she's using Mary Catherine Bacon right now. So it's, I don't have the deed right here, but if the deed was originally in Mary Catherine Winslow, that's the way to address it. She's now Mary Catherine Bacon.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, everybody.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Good luck with the project.
Bill, before we move on, would you, it's come up several times now as to, this isn't a question for the applicants. This is a new question.
Thank you.
So it's come up several times now, the question of when to do the findings. Can you check with town council on that and send their response around to the full planning board, please?
Sure. At least we did them.
Well, you know, there's also a question in my mind that we really should be going through those. It's a list of questions that I think is there for a reason. So if you could find out from town council, get their input on that, I think that would be helpful.
Okay, I think the, I mean, I will do that. I think when I say can we incorporate these by reference and you know, I would expect that any one of us who has a problem with any one of them would raise it at that point. To me, it just seems a time waste to go through every single, you know, read every one every time. But if that's what Donna tells us to do, we'll do it. I'll check.
Thank you.
Okay. You'll see that Jeff Lacy has joined us. Welcome, Jeff. You're muted, Jeff. How, first of all, how's your daughter? Is she okay?
Yeah, she's good.
Okay, back at school?
Back in school, yeah. She took care of my farm here for a week while I was gone and things are good. So it was, it was COVID of the youth.
Yeah.
It seemed to get through pretty quickly.
Well, thanks for joining us. I thought before we get back to draft number seven, obviously, what's happened in the last couple of weeks is that in two groups, most of us have been to your neck of the woods, Jeff, to visit sites where the principles of your bylaw, draft bylaw, are, have been put into practice. I think that's a fair statement, if not in every technical detail, at least in principle. And I thought it would be useful now that the majority of the board has done that, seen these places, that we talk about impressions, reactions, and any comments on on the visits to those sites, what we may have liked or didn't like, what we may have learned or not, or surprised us, whatever. I just think we, we owe it to ourselves to discuss among ourselves the value, if any, of those meetings with, or sessions at those projects and discussions, in some cases with residents or owners. So does anyone want to lead off with general impressions or questions or comments of, that the rest of us can think through and react to? And Jeff is here to, you know, elaborate on any one of those places if necessary. I'm sorry. Thank you so much for taking the time. You were, you were, you were, you were, you were a good tour guide and I certainly enjoyed, enjoyed getting to know Shoots Berry a little bit better.
Nice co-op.
Let alone Wendell. So, yeah.
Yeah, both groups went to the same places, even the co-op.
Yeah.
Yeah, nice lunch.
Co-op was great. It was an excellent sandwich. Yeah, this lunch. Does anybody, Marie, you look like you want to talk, or am I, no, okay.
No, I enjoyed, it was interesting. It was sort of different places than I expected. But it was, it was very interesting to see how this bylaw is not just for big development kinds of things, but is useful for any kind of people that want to, that wanted to save some of their land. And open space was, was very interesting. The being able to use the land well and keep open space was pretty impressive. I enjoyed it. Like I said, I didn't, I expected more houses and things, more big development, but it was really interesting to see this bylaw working differently.
Yeah. Well, actually, you know, one question, I don't know why I didn't ask you when we were there. But Jeff, how long has the NHRPZ bylaw been in, you know, in action?
It was first passed in my town in 2008.
Okay.
And it, it, a number of years later, it became the state model. And so I've sort of lost count of how many places have adopted it. I've, I've adopted it in six, six more towns and I'm working in three more now. So, yeah, but 2008.
Okay, now that's great to know.
Yeah, and it really didn't get going for a while because that was the height of the Great Recession, right, right along in there. And it was just kind of a development wasteland for years after that.
Yeah. I don't know whether you can see this, but the first place that the group I was with visited, Jeff, as you recall, was called Swallow Rise. I don't know whether that was the first item on, I think it was, because you, it was John Quist Road, right? This isn't going to.
Eudine.
Do any good, but I'm trying to, I can't share the screen because it's not, I don't have it digitally. But I wonder what you would say to Jeff? If this property owner felt differently about NRHPZ and it weren't in effect, what could he have done with this property? As a standard subdivision? What could it have looked like if he was not acting in accordance with a bylaw similar to ours?
Well, he developed some plans that show that, actually. Standard subdivision in Wendell of three acre lots with 200 feet of frontage. And what that would amount to is a number of frontage lots along the road in both places, near both building envelopes, frontage lots along the roads. And then a subdivision road that entered sort of where John Quist Road is, and then just went all the way through the back and came out by the other development envelope and had houses along it, along the new frontage that it created. And I think they estimated, estimated 33 houses or something, pretty much taking up the whole property with three acre lots. So 33 times, 30 is what, 99 or something?
Yeah, yeah, it's 110 acres.
Yeah, that would have, that would have taken up the whole property with house lots and streets. So that would be the maximum scenario.
Well, I mean, of the things that we saw, I felt like, you know, obviously, it's not built out in any way. And it's all, you know, kind of on paper at this point. But I felt that that plan there was sort of the most impactful of the of the places that we saw in terms of what the, of what the, what the difference might be in terms of like, you know, potential build out on a property. You know, I mean, honestly, I mean, you know, and, you know, the other, the other, the other things we saw, which were, you know, delightful and interesting, but, you know, we're all, as far as I could see, sort of like within compliance of the, you know, standard, of the standard zoning that exists already in the towns. So, you know, that's, 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 you know, sort of not, 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 not a big difference, if you will. Just for Wayne and Gary's benefit, because you didn't go on these visits. And I'm sorry, this is the best I can do, but in the property we just talked about, which has two developable sites on it, in accordance with, with Jeff's bylaw, in 110 acres, he's, and they are here and way over here in the corner. The rest is open space. We're talking about the difference between two developable sites and 33 houses, in theory, allowable under a subdivision bylaw. I don't know if that helps, but.
Ended up, ended up, I mean, I think after a discussion with Mass Audubon, you know, that potentially there had been, you know, with the, you know, the local NHRPZ bylaw and, you know, and allowing for some additional density, that there were, you know, something like 20, you know, two dozen, two dozen housing, house sites. And, and what, 27?
And then Mass Audubon brought it to 13.
And then Mass Audubon brought it down to like, halved it to, you know, to 13. So basically, you've got two eight acre envelopes where, you know, a half a dozen houses would go on each one of those, which is, you know, like, definitely not, you know, two or three acre zoning. But whatever, it's a, it's, 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 it's not, it's not, it's not a lot of sprawl on there.
I mean, it's also, right now, currently, that particular property has got a house, a barn, and then Michael, what was his, Eudine, was that it?
Two other, Lederwein, yep.
One, yeah, his, his daughter's house out towards the road. So we're not seeing it, it built out with the, with the 13. Was the 13 the total number between?
13 is the total now.
Right.
Yeah, so, I mean, another thing that I noticed was that, okay, yes, you can contact the corporation that owns the property and ask permission to go on site. But BNRC will not hold a CR, Conservation Restriction, if there is no public access.
Oh, Berkshire Natural Resources?
No, they will not hold a conservation restriction unless there's public access.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Other people can hold conservation restrictions. I mean, the town can hold a conservation restriction, right?
The land trust.
You don't have to have Berkshire Natural Resources.
I think it, you know, I think ideally you have an organization that has some, some staff, but certainly the land trust could hold it. But again, I think ideally you would have sort of more dedicated organization now. Mass Audubon, I don't know what their interest would be. They're certainly, they have a presence out here.
Oh, sure.
Actually, Jeff, that's an interesting question. Does, I think we brought this up, but did Mass Audubon, did they request public access for their, for the, for the conservation restriction on the Eudine property?
I think, I think they do. And the, one thing you can't do as a planning board is require public access to the open space. Some of the bylaws that I've written have a density bonus. If you, if you volunteer public access, you can have a little density bonus. But that's the only way that you can get it. But if you're, as an applicant, looking around for holder of your conservation restriction and the holder says, well, we're not going to hold it without public access, like Berkshire, apparently, then they have to have public access. like Berkshire, apparently, then they have to have public access. They have to grant it if they want them to hold the restriction.
Well, one of the things, I mean, this is, I mean, I don't mean to sort of change the subject, but I mean, one of the things that was really charming about visiting the the property where your house used to be, was just how, like, nicely incorporated public as, public access trails and, you know, kind of a community, you know, community access was, was there, I mean, you know, I, 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 I know that's not necessarily easy to accomplish, but, 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 but you certainly, that, it certainly, it certainly happened there, and it was, 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 it was lovely to see.
But that
Yeah, I, I would say on those four projects, two of them have public access, although it's not, it's not necessarily obvious or advertised. And two of them don't, the last one doesn't. And the, the small one that we looked at from the road, the second one doesn't.
The last one was the one where you used to live, Jeff?
No, that was the third one.
No, that's the one, that's the one with the crazy rocks, no public access.
Oh, gosh, that one, yeah, oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
I forget.
Well, 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 that one's owned by a lawyer, so he probably doesn't want any liability.
Probably not.
Property, but.
So no access, no access on the last one, did you say?
Correct, right, right, so I, I will say about Swallow Rise, that bylaw was, was written more generously than I would have preferred. Hence the twenty-seven units that could have theoretically been possible, I don't think it ever would have actually been possible on those building envelopes, but theoretically twenty-seven units, but those formulas were done more strictly than I recommended. And Mass Audubon stepped in and said, well, if you don't want us to hold this restriction, you know, we're going to make a deal and reduce these, you know, reduce the unit, so that all worked out fine. But one thing that just came in today, last meeting you folks requested, or Bill requested a, a finished conservation analysis, so I asked Michael Lederwein to send me his conservation analysis for Swallow Rise, so you can see what one of those looks like. Well, he sent it to me, but it's twenty-three megabytes, I'm trying to figure out how to get it to you. It's got a lot of cool maps and different things that he put together. But that's the process, that's what he gives to the planning board to justify where his open space is going to be and where his develop, development envelopes are going to be, so. After we finish here, I'll get back to work figuring out how to get it to you.
If it's in, if it's in physical form, Jeff, is it?
It, it's an electronic form, he, he email, he emails me these monster things that crash my system all the time.
Even as a, even as a PDF, it's a a large
Yeah, it, it's twenty-three megabytes.
As a PDF?
There's multiple PDFs, yeah, because they're maps, lots of maps. But I'll, I'll figure it out, I'll get it to you guys, and, and then you can see what, you know, what the process was that the applicant went through to justify what he was doing out there.
Do you have a Gmail account?
Hmm, sort of.
Have you tried using that? I mean, twenty-three megabytes shouldn't should be able to do.
Yeah.
Thank. Try your Gmail account and send it to Mike and Alice, and he can forward it around to the board. Or Jennifer.
All right.
Send it to Jennifer.
Town email's a five meg limit. So town email addresses have a five megabyte limit.
Oh, they do?
Yeah.
Oh, thank goodness.
I'm not surprised.
You can use a service called wetransfer.com.
Wetransfer.com, okay.
How many pages does that equate to? Because if Jennifer could have a copy in her office, and if we wanted copies, we could get it from Jennifer, but
Or she could
I, I don't want all that on my phone either, or my, my email.
Yeah, I agree.
And Ja- Jennifer could also scan, send it to us.
It's, it's one, two, three, four, five.
It doesn't matter, it's just if it's a large number, I don't want it on my email, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I, I've got.
Yeah, no, I agree with you, Nancy, I think it would be good if if it's possible for Jennifer to get, or make hard, hard copies and hold them for examination in her office.
Yeah.
So, all right. I, I, I'll figure out how to do it, and
Yeah, the mail, the post office.
Yeah, I could, I could print that, I could print them out here and, and, and just send one copy to, to Bill or Michael.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
From that, we can scan it and so forth.
Yeah. Okay.
I think you're right not to not to email that big an attachment to, to all of us.
Okay.
So Patrick just dropped in the chat the wetransfer URL, Jeff.
I got it.
Two gigabytes, that should
We all got it.
Okay, got it.
So what I liked about this site visit, tell me if I'm wrong, but the owner still owns all the property that we saw, each owner owns the property, and he decided where the building lots would be, correct? More or less?
Well, he proposed where they were going to be.
Yes, that's what I mean, yeah.
But he, he proposed where, he or she proposed where the building envelopes were going to be, and within them, there will be lots. But often, the, the, the lots aren't determined right off the bat when these are approved, like Swallow Rise, you know, there, there's no individual building lots in there, there's just two, you know, seven or eight acre building envelopes, and the lots will be created down the road in the future within those building envelopes.
Yeah.
And the one that we only saw from the road didn't have the required town frontage, correct? So he could still have building lots in there, and he could still build on it, even though he didn't have the required town frontage.
Yeah.
Correct, yeah.
Now that, yeah.
I thought that was interesting.
Yep.
I mean, you know, I mean, I, I, you know, it's a little hard to say without stuff, seeing stuff built, I mean, and, you know, my reservations still with the NHRPZ come down to, you know, sort of a, an abdication of control over, you know, minimum lot sizes, minimum frontages, you know, minimum frontage and, and setbacks and, and you know, I mean, all these, all the things we looked at last week were, you know, I mean, you know, yeah, very, very nice benign projects, I mean, not, no one's, no one's, no one's, no one's getting hurt. But, but I just, I just, I just concern, I'm just concerned that we are giving up some elements of control that we've traditionally had, and that, and that in fact also, you know, a lot of what we saw was basically in compliance with, you know, your standard, you know, New England, you know, you know, multiple acre zoning and, 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 you know, really wasn't all that different from, 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 from what a, you know, conventional subdivision, you know, would be, so.
Oh, well, well, two points, Carl. First, if, if you want lot sizes, if you want frontages, if you want setbacks, you can add them.
Yeah.
It, it's, it, it's all what you, what you want to see in your bylaw, and if, if those make you comfortable, you know, they, they, they need to be smaller probably than what you've got now, but, but you could put minimums in. And, and number two, all of those things are different than conventional subdivisions. Conventional subdivisions almost always use all of the land and divide it up into house lots and streets.
There's, well, I mean, I, 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 I'm no more in love with the conventional subdivision than, 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 than anyone here. But, you know, I, it just, it's, 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 you know, it's, it's just sort of a question of like, you know, how do you, how do you, how do you, you know, administer these things and, 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 and maintain some, maintain some control?
So Carl, can you, can you elaborate on that a little bit? What's, what's the control we would be giving up under this bylaw? Just be, be a little more specific, please?
Oh, well, no, I mean, I'm, I'm, I mean, what, exactly what I said, you know, setbacks, space, sizes of lots. You know, I, 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 I'm not a big fan of, like, you know, of, of tearing down woods to build roads, but the, you know, I think, I think actually Jeff has even pointed out that, you know, the, the, you know, the, the cost of building roads is actually a disincentive to creating, you know, conventional sort of suburban sprawl developments, I, 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 you know, I, I, you know, I, I, I think, I think there is a real part of, and, and Jeff, you know, I mean, I, I reiterate our, like, you know, invitation to come, you know, come check out Stockbridge, you know, I mean, but you know, I mean, the, the community's developed in a lot of different ways. And, you know, we have, we have, you know, still got a viable town center with, 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 with quite dense, with quite dense zoning, but, but I think a lot of the character of the larger town is based on, you know, there being a certain amount of property around people's houses and and, and also frankly, you know, and I'll be, I'll be blunt, you know, which is the fact is that we have resisted development. And we have used the tools that we have been given to resist it, and I think that I don't think that's been a bad thing.
I mean, I would add that our, I think the tax rate, what was the tax rate in Chutesbury, Jeff, twenty-three, twenty-four dollars? Yeah, ours is, ours is between eight and nine dollars, so, and, you know, I have read some research that
Still too much.
Chutesbury has no commerce.
Yeah.
Has no what?
Has, has, has no commerce, and a great deal of it is, is, is government-owned land by the state for the Quavon Regis War and Amherst as reservoir land, so a lot of it's public land, and what isn't is strictly residential. That's unfortunately why the tax rate is so high.
Okay. Any other comments from Kate? Did you have comments separate from Carl's?
I'm I'll listen to other people and then I'll chime in.
Okay.
Did you want to make comments, Bill?
Well, I, I I brought up the, the first place, Swallow Rise, and, and the the difference between what's, what's allowable under Jeff's bylaw and what could be done whether by the subdivision regs or Mass Audubon, there's a huge difference. I kind of like that. I was impressed with all of the projects, except for the one we couldn't see, but which was described from the road up that narrow unpaved lane. I particularly liked the place where Jeff used to live. I thought it was beautifully done, both the residential parts and the open parts. One little loop of road to get in and out. And some very nice open space. Hiking trails and walking trails and beautifully vegetated houses behind trees. You know, extremely well, well done. So I thought it tended to confirm what I like about this bylaw, which is I don't think it contributes to sprawl. I, I think, not that we're inundated with subdivision proposals, we probably never will be, but I think we, we want to avoid subdivisions, in that respect, I think I'm with you, Carl. And this is one way to to avoid them, is to create a bylaw that replaces, in effect, the or, or provides an option for a developer that is more can be more attracted to the developer and still be attractive to the town. I believe that that's possible.
So one question Jeff I had was, the subdivision where you lived, that predated your, your bylaw, your correct? That was done without your bylaw, is that right? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's actually, I, I call that a limited development. And it was done by a bunch of us conservation, conservation-minded people who who, who wanted to create a project like that. But it, it became, it became the inspiration for NRHPZ, and if, if you actually applied Chutesbury's current formulas to that project, you'd probably get that project. So, so we sort of created the bylaw to to encourage more project, well, to require more projects like that and simply do away with conventional subdivision in town. So that was the inspiration, but, but that took thirty-three waivers of, of the subdivision control law in, in, in the town of Chutesbury.
That's interesting, I think you mentioned that a little bit. You know, certainly with regard to the road size and, 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 and widths and so forth, and, you know, you know, I, I don't know the ins and outs enough of, 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 of our bylaw to require, to, to say what, you know, what would be required to, to you know, I mean, I, I, I to, 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 you know, build, builds, build, build smart, I mean, if you're going to build, I mean, you know, do, do, do it in a way that's, that's, that's attractive and appealing and sustainable, and, and I just don't know.
Well, probably if, if you had a group of people such as we were back thirty years ago, who came to you with a piece of land that was forty-one acres, you could probably bend in, in your subdivision regulations to the point of letting them do it. But it's, you're relying on, on the intentions of, of, of people who are not developers, who are conservation-minded.
Waiting for people to have good intentions, I'm not sure.
So we kind of wrote the bylaw to ensure good intention.
Yeah.
Right, but doesn't, didn't you say that Chutesbury requires that roads be paved? Our by, we do not.
Yeah, that that's in the subdivision regulations, and that had, that was one of the many waivers, yep.
But we do not require that.
Yep, well, that's, that's one less waiver.
Yeah, well, one, 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 one thing Kate and I both agreed, while we were driving around in obscure parts of, even I've, I've been exploring more, you know, I'm getting deeper and deeper into Massachusetts. I thought, I thought, I thought Stockbridge was already, was pretty out there, but but, you know, that maybe, and I don't want to take people's time up necessarily, but I mean, that for us to revisit or visit some of the developments that taken place in Stockbridge and Lee and Lennox and Great Barrington and just, you know, around us, West Stockbridge, what have you, just to take a look at them, you know, and see what, you know, what's, what's, what's worked and what hasn't, and what some of the unintended consequences have been, I don't know. Like, I just, I just feel like, you know, some of this stuff close to home is, 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 is going to be very instructive, too.
Carl, what developments do you like in Stockbridge?
Um, interesting question. I don't like the one next door to me.
Which one is that? Is that Stockbridge Terrace?
I don't know. Yeah, whatever. No, Stockbridge Terrace, for God's sake. I don't really care about that at all. Uh, no, um, uh, no, there were two houses put up, uh, you know, up the hill for me and my, my father-in-law held out and, you know, didn't sell, um, our pretty woods to this guy. Uh, um, I just, you know, I wouldn't even be, you know, on the planning board if it weren't for the, uh, weren't, weren't for fighting the, uh, the Stone Hill development that went in, whatever that is, like, you know, twenty-five years ago now. Um, I haven't gone to see the Stone Ridge thing. Um, uh, I don't know. I mean, there's things like, you know, some of those, you know, like, I mean, you know, the condos at Pine, you know, whatever, uh, you know, it, um, White Pines, I mean, uh, I, you know, I, uh, it's not my dream, but, um, but they seem to be quite successful. Uh, you know, but there's a lot of different variations and, um, you know, but then you get something like, you know, um, uh, the, uh, you know, the development over in Lee at the resorts and, you know, uh, you know, Cranwell or, or, uh, oh, God, what was it? Ascension Farm? What is that? Anyway, I mean, it's just, you know, it's like, I, 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 you know, some of the stuff that goes up in Lennox, I, 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 you know, it makes me nervous, you know.
But in Stockbridge, isn't there, is there housing areas that you like, like White Pines and that kind of thing? So you do like some, some sort of cluster housing because that's.
I, I, I think it doesn't make, it doesn't not make sense. I mean, you know, like, I mean, I don't know, look at Eaton Court. I mean, there's like, there's kind of a success story. I mean, I think the, I think the, 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 the pine, you know, the pine woods, uh, uh, you know, was, 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 you know, was, was, I mean, it's, 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 it's attractive. It serves, it serves a purpose. Um, and, um, you know, no, I'm, you know, no, Nancy, don't get me wrong. I'm not opposed to everything, you know.
Well, some people, you know, they don't want any.
If I were, I'd move to, I'd move, I'd move to, I'd move to, to, to Washington.
Or Iowa.
Ruin, I mean, you know.
No, no, but what I'm saying is some people don't want any
Yeah.
development like that. They want to leave it all two acre, four acre, whatever. So you can have big lots with one house on it rather than, you know, to.
Well.
I don't, I don't, you know what I'm saying?
It's, but, I mean, there's no question that that leads to, you know, more expensive, uh, uh, a more expensive model. Um, um, and, you know, I mean, on the other hand, I mean, if, I don't know, if I were, if I were developing a property, I think I might want to like, you know, be in a situation where I was selling, you know, bigger fancier lots. I mean, I, I, it's, it's, it's a, it's a hard, it's a hard, it's a hard road to, you know, it's a, it's a hard, it's a hard balance to strike.
I would say that the one thing that I came away with was that design standards are important. I realize this, this board has not expressed an appetite for them, but boy, the, um, the lack of architectural cohesion um, in that last project that we visit, visited, that really, you know, I mean, it doesn't help that you've got this massive McMansion at the top of the hill surrounded by asphalt, but, um.
Well, that was already there, though.
That was there, but, you know, that's sort of, um, the lack of con, architectural continuity in that, that area really struck me.
You can't, you can't regulate that.
Um, I think that you can have design standards. In fact, Joel recommended it, so to me, that seems like.
Nope, 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 nope.
We've got them.
No, 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 no.
Are you trying to say no, Jeff?
If, if you have a project like Desisto that, that comes in under a PUD or a special permit or something, uh, yes, perhaps you, you could do it there. Individual, single-family dwellings, nope, 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 not in Massachusetts.
So at White Pines, which is, um, a development near me, all the properties have the same siding and, you know, look, I get it. It cannot work that. I mean, I, I don't want to.
They must have a homeowner's.
Can I finish, please? Can I finish, please? May I finish, please? At White Pines, um, there is a certain, I mean, it's certainly, I'm sure their association is ensuring that um, things sort of stay. Um, there's a certain amount of continuity. There is a downside to that, in my opinion, and I'm not going to describe that because I don't think it's appropriate to comment on other people's homes. But, um, on that project, it was done. So, so what, you know, so Jeff, what would you say to that?
I would say that there's design standards in the old orchard, the place I used to live. Um, but they're, but they're self-imposed. They were imposed by the homeowners association voluntarily on each other. But if, if you're talking about single-family dwellings, either, um, created on A and R lots or created on subdivision lots, the, the town can't go in there and, and, and start telling them what kind of siding to use and, and what color to paint and, you know, the, the different angles. No, can't do that.
Okay. Well, that's, that's definitely a negative from my standpoint.
But that's, that's across the board, Kate. That's, that's everywhere, everything.
Nantucket.
Well, yes. Yes, maybe not on Nantucket, yeah, but.
Whatever. I mean, but, but I think that one of the things that I find appealing about Stockbridge is actually the, the variety of, um, of the way that, you know, people build and, 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 you know, we have some, we have some really, um, you know, uh, we've had some, 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 some cool contemporary stuff go up and, uh, um, and it's just not, you know, uh, you know, even with the Historic Preservation Commission that I'm on, you know, we keep on saying, you know, we're not the design police, but, um, but, but there is, I don't know, it's, 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 it's hard. I mean, you know, you, you know, you're, you're dealing again with like, you know, finding people that are like-minded and, 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 uh, you know, and, 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 you know, want to, uh, you know, want to, want to, want to do something, want to do something that, you know, is, 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 is keeping with the community.
So, so Kate, that may be a negative, but that is a, an across-the-board negative with development in general.
Okay. Patrick had his hand up forever. I don't know if he's still there.
Patrick, are you muted?
Muted. Oh.
I'm good. I, I, I just, I, you know, I was going to comment and reinforce that I don't believe we can consider design standards. Uh, you know, or, or the, the look and feel of a home in, in our board decisions. We can, however, on a special permit, take into account, not in a single-family, with a single-family replacement, but in a large development or a mixed-use development, we can take into account on a special permit, character of the neighborhood. Now, the trade-up here is if we're, if, if you go this route, we're going to give up some control, but we're giving up in order to conserve land. And I think that that is really the fundamental, you know, uh, choice that's going to come before the voters is, you know, is a presentation of, we're giving developers a little bit more flexibility in a by-right development environment. And we're taking away their develop, their ability to develop all of the land by doing this conservation restriction. And that's going to be up, that's going to be, whichever one is better is up to me. It's going to be up to the voters. And that's all I got. Roots.
Do you, do you have a reaction to that, Jeff?
I, 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 I think Patrick made the main point that, that, that what this, it's natural reason, well, here we call it natural and historic resource protection zoning, but it's, it, it's to preserve natural resources. That's the goal of it. It's, it's different than what Randall does. It's more protective. It's density negative. And it's designed to preserve big chunks of open space while allowing some development. That's, the, the open space is the heart and soul of it. Um, and, you know, you're going to have what you have in, in houses like you do any, anyway. And you're going to get a buck ugly metal house like that last one we saw, um, which, which, which I think is hideous too, but, um, you know, it sits next to some beautiful preserved open land that wouldn't be there if that, if that parcel was developed conventionally.
Good point.
Well, I mean, you know, I mean, the, the, the.
The land was ruined, just, you know, basically, I mean.
Earl was talking. Go ahead, Carl.
Oh, no, no. I mean, I mean, you know, I mean, I've, I've been, I've been dealing with, uh, with, um, land conservation, you know, projects in, in, in Stockbridge and Lennox for, 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 for decades and, and, you know, it is a funny, it's funny how it happens and, and the, you know, the idea that, um, that we could use, uh, because, because it, it happens almost in spite of, um, of itself. Um, uh, but I mean, you know, the idea of using, you know, planning tools and, 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 and bylaws to, uh, to, to sustain that, I think is, uh, you know, it's a great idea, but.
Jeff, would you be willing to come out for the better part of a day to Stockbridge and, and be shown some of these projects, most of which you probably don't really have a clue about other than vague references to what's on them, but where they sit and, and, uh, how they developed is, is something that could be potentially interesting to you if you would be willing to commit the time to do it.
Yes. I would.
Yeah. I, I think it would be time well spent for you, um, to get a, a flavor for a better flavor for what the town, uh, looks like. And, you know, you could go around with a couple or three board members and, um, you know, you'd, you'd hear them express opinions, uh, pro and con, and, uh, you, you'd be able to, you know, form your own sense of whether these places work or don't.
Yeah, I, I'd love to do that.
And I think it would be good for us to.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, no, I, I, I'd like to do that. I'd, I, I, I'd like to take a look at the, uh, the, the infamous Desisto property, which I've, which I've studied that nauseously.
I don't know if we're allowed.
Studied the map, you know.
You know, that, that raises, uh, you, you mentioned that property. It raises a point that, uh, we, I've kind of put to one side for months. And that is to invite the developer, the owner of that property, to have a look at this bylaw and to, um, react to it. What's, what's good about it? What's bad about it? What he likes, what he doesn't? Whether elements of it would work on that property or not. We haven't heard anything from him in months. I think he's had a conversation with Roxanne, a conversation or two with, uh, the chair, chairman woman of the select board. But, um, I don't know that that's, uh, produced anything. I long ago invited him here and he declined. Uh, but I think we should renew the invitation and, and, um, specifically to react to, um, you know, this, what I would call a late draft, not a final draft of the bylaw. It would be interesting to get his um, reaction to it. Not, not that that would be dispositive, um, because it's one person's, uh, opinion, but it, we don't have any developer input yet, and I think it would be interesting to get some thoughts from developers.
I've asked for that over six months ago. I think we need that input. I think it's only smart to hear that side of the conversation. And I can't believe it actually came up from somebody other than me. I mean, I just think it makes sense to have that opinion, whatever, the discussion. I think it's very important.
I know Roxanne has asked him. She told me a couple of weeks ago that she's spoken to him. And he said he was burnt, so he didn't want to come back, but.
That's what he, that's what he told me months ago.
Yeah, he talked with, he's talked to a couple of people, but Wayne's got some great drawings and maps of the project that he had wanted to do that you might be interested in, Jeff.
Um, does, does, does that person own that property?
Yes.
And have, has he or any of the colleagues ever talked about or threatened to subdivide it residentially?
That was the plan. Not to my knowledge. He had a plan.
He brought massive, he brought, Jeff, he brought, um, proposed a complete rewrite of the Cottage Era State bylaw um, to the town, um, for, for, you know, for public hearing. And predating that, uh, he's brought two bylaw changes to the town through the Cottage Era State bylaw. We've basically had at one planning board public hearing, we had a rewrite of the Cottage Era State era bylaw from a select board member. At the same time, we had another version, another rewrite from, um, Charlie Sheehan from the Desisto, the Desisto developer.
Patrick Sheehan.
Patrick Sheehan, sorry. Um, so, you know, we basically had three bylaws come before the planning board.
The reason, oh, go ahead.
Can I finish, please?
Go ahead.
Um, so, you know, there's, there's certainly, they have had a presence and, um, but he has never come before this board to, to talk about his project. He was before the select board when he was proposing bylaw changes.
Yep.
Done?
Wayne, go ahead.
Finished? All right. Then the reason that the bylaw change was proposed was because he was not allowed to have a conversation with the selectmen. That is what he wanted to do initially, to do basically, Jeff, what you described in the beginning of the proceedings for this bylaw, which is to have the discussion and talk about what may or may not be viable or, or a well-received or what have you. Uh, and he was not allowed he, to have that conversation. He was rebuffed by the selectmen and so he had to go the route he went, unfortunately, because it was productive for nobody.
Hello?
Um, yes, Marie, go ahead.
Um, we've talked about this a long time and in a lot of ways. And I think for us to really go forward with this bylaw, that I think it's time we made a formal decision about including the Cottage Era bylaw in this, um, in this bylaw that we're writing right now. So I would like to, and we always say, well, we change our mind and this kind of thing. But I would like to make a motion to include the Cottage Era, the Cottage Era, um, bylaw, historic preservation into this NHRPZ um, zoning bylaw that we are drafting now. And Jeff had indicated it could kind of bolt on to the end of this, and I think we need a formal decision that this is what we want to do because we seem to keep waffling back and forth. And I know there are some of us that think this was the most important part of this at all. So I think we need to, to vote on it and say, we're going to do it. So I make a motion that we include the Cottage Era in this, um, bylaw that we're drafting.
Is there a second? I seconded. Um, is there going to be public comment?
Yeah, hang on.
Oh, there will be a lot of comment.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on. Let's do the board first.
I think Gary had something to say.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to hear from the planning board first. Uh, Gary, did you have your hand up? I can't see it, but.
Um, I was just going to second it. That's all just stuff.
Um, I was just gonna second it. That's all just to move it forward.
Oh, okay, thank you. Um. Carl, you have clearly, you want to say something?
No, I, I, you know, I honestly, I think it's a very. I, I, you know. Listen, Marie, I, 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 I really appreciate. The notion of moving forward. Um, I think. Um, it's. A complex issue because they. You know, cottage era state bylaw was definitely, you know. What is the era of that? It's like nineteen ninety-five or something. I mean, it's, it's response, it's a response to, you know, a rather different set of circumstances. Than we are dealing with now, um, uh. And, you know, I think it was an effort to. Put in place some historic preservation mass, measures that, um, you know, that, that, you know. You know, we're, 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 you know, seemed, seemed. Very timely then, and, um, you know, I just don't know. Have we ever like actually? Done anything with the cottage era estate bylaw besides like discover that it was like, you know, invalid or?
No, once the Sisto thing was over, nothing has been done. We've talked about it as, as doing it, but then we got into this NHRPZ. And then, so we need to just incorporate what a cottage era. Um, property, how it could fit into this bylaw. And change that other cottage era bylaw.
Listen, Chairman, could I just, could I just clarify something quickly here?
Hey, Jeff.
So I, I spent a good deal of time and, and build you folks for working on the cottage era state bylaws. And, uh. It, it was at one point a separate pre-standing bylaw. Uh, then it got bolted on to the, the back of the, um. Uh, of the NHRPZ. And then it got unbolted and taken off and, and, and then it got, uh, sort of mothballed. But it, it, it is fairly well along with, with your not too, um. Distant input. But it's just sitting there now. Um, and if, if it, just, just so everybody understands, if it goes on to the NHRPZ, then that means that. That every cottage era estate project. Is a special permit, but it's a special permit that's also subject to all the requirements of the NHRPZ. Which includes the open space. And it includes the conservation analysis process that, that, that goes into that. Um, and, and it includes some of the methodology. So it, it becomes like a NHRPZ. Except it's a little different in that they have existing buildings and there's going to be some other uses involved. But. The most important thing is eighty percent or whatever you decide the percentage is going to be open space. In a cottage era estate project now.
Except that hasn't been decided.
Well, if it gets bolted on to here, then it gets all the benefits of here, whatever you decide they're going to be.
Um, yeah, you know, I mean, I mean, my, 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 my thing, and again, I, I, uh, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm. I'm the biggest proponent of, you know, preserving. The, you know, the lovely. The loveliness of, 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 of Stockbridge's nineteenth century landscape, um. Um, to whatever extent we can, but, um, but I, I. I, I, I feel like. You know, it's more about. What are the big parcels? What's, you know, where's the pressure? What? Are the areas where we have, you know, successful land conservation and, um. And, you know, I mean, I just. You know, other than like, you know, Community Preservation Act, I mean, it's, I think it's really hard to, to legislate, um, uh. You know, um, um, historic, uh, you know, uh, the funds, funds for the preservation of historic buildings. I mean, it, we, we have, we have, we have, we have very little, um, for that, and, um. I mean, it's not to say that we shouldn't make an effort, but.
So Carl, are you arguing for, excuse me, Kate, are you arguing for, um? Uh, Kate, you like to interrupt other people and tell, and tell people that you want to finish. So I'm going to finish, Carl.
You never let me finish, and if someone interrupts me, you let it go.
Okay, Carl.
Whatever.
Please.
I, I don't know that I, I don't know that I, what was that?
Do you not want a cottage era estate bylaw redo? At all, whether it's bolted on or separate?
I don't know. I mean, has it ever been any, has it ever been of any use, actually?
I don't know. I don't know, but, uh, I, I think probably not, but I, as Jeff just said. What is proposed under his draft, which we haven't looked at in a long time. Is the preservation of open space. Which is not part of the existing. Cottage era state bylaw, and that's the fundamental difference.
I, I, I looked.
Whether it's separate or, or. Um, distinct. Or, or bolted on.
I, 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 I looked at that draft today. Um, I mean, I don't know, we're, 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 I, I think we've actually made some headway. But, um, the, uh. You know, as far as, as far as the, uh, as far as the historic preservation element goes, um. Um, I. I, I, I couldn't, I couldn't, I couldn't vote. You know, one way or the other right now. I, I really, I really couldn't. I mean, I think it's, I think it's, um. Um, and, and, and. I should, I should, I should be able to, I should be able to, to, to do that, but I, 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 I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm not ready for, for that at this point.
Okay, Kate, what, what did you have to say?
Um, question for Jeff. Jeff, at one point you were quite clear. That you felt that the cottage era state bylaw. Should be separate. So what changed?
Now I'm trying to think of why I would have believed it was separate, um. At, at, I, I, I know, I, I know one reservation I had was the overall length. Um. Um, of, of the thing which would have been, you know, one bylaw that probably would have been around sixteen pages. Um, or so. If you put them together, um, oh, what else? What else bothered me about it? Um. One, you know, one advantage of keeping them separate is if, if you get to vote on both of them, maybe one will rise and one will fall. But if you put them both together, then, then you risk. Both rising or both falling. So, um. You know, that's, those are considerations. I, I can't really, I can't really think of any substantive reason not to have them together. I. The, 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 the only other approach, Kate, would be to. Uh, have the CEE bylaw as separate, but. But quickly build in some of the NHRPZ aspects that you wanted, like the. Conservation analysis in the open space, whatever you wanted. Could do it that way.
That would be my preference, and then I would also just comment that. We haven't even talked about that bylaw. In many, many months, so I haven't even looked at it recently. Um, it hasn't been on the agenda for discussion. So certainly that would be a concern for me.
I completely agree, Kate, that, uh. It's been put to one side for months and we'd all need to dust it off and, uh. Uh, take time to give it a fresh look and, and discuss it, uh, what, you know. And so maybe. Maybe, uh. Uh, you know, I know Marie has made a motion to, um. To make a decision on this, um. Maybe we want to look at it again first. And then decide. Do we want a separate bylaw or do we want to? As we say, bolted on. To this bylaw.
Well, if, if people really aren't ready to vote on this, I can rescind my motion. I just thought it was time to move on and people wanted to do something with the. Cottage era bylaw. And I, my feeling was kind of, let's just work it together. And write a cottage era bylaw, you know, that works with this. I don't mind rescinding it if people. Still want to talk about it, but I do think we need to move. Forward. And not say the same thing every single week.
And, 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 and Marie, I totally back your instinct. In terms of trying to move the thing ahead, the conversation ahead. Um, it is a confusing situation. Um, I think Jeff's point about like having. A bylaw that is too complicated or too long, I mean, you know, uh, is, 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 is well taken. And that like whatever. We end up proposing to a town meeting needs to be, you know, short. Clear and, 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 you know, and, and, and obviously, and, you know, the best interests of the, of, 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 of the people of Stockbridge. Um, uh, I. You know, I mean, I mean, I don't mean, I don't mean to sound so ambiguous, but I, I really sort of don't quite know what to do with that. That, 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 that CE be, you know.
Well, I, I know some of our committee feel this is more important than the other, and I think we just need to make a decision of whether we. Whether we want to put it together or we want it separate. Um, I don't mind rescinding my motion if people aren't ready to vote for it yet.
The idea. The idea. When we started our charge. After that. Initial, uh. Uh, development or the vote that was had. On the Sisto, our charge was to work on cottage era estate. Somehow we got down this other avenue of NHRPZ. And we have for two years now. You know, I, I just can't believe that we're. Now just going to get back to it. And I think that's what started this whole conversation. Um. Life was easy before this came along. You know, you, you vote on a, a house by the lake and that was it. And this has taken up every bit of our time. And. I don't think we're any further along because we have not included that. That was our initial charge. And somehow we got. Sidetracked in a major way.
Jeff?
Um, I, I, I do remember that at the time that I stopped working on CEE, that was still when Christine was. Kind of, um, um. Supervising me and I was disappointed because. I was getting happy with it. I was getting happier and happier with it. I, I think it's in fairly good shape. Um, one hybrid approach, if we want to have them run on separate tracks and we like certain things from NHRPZ. And, and you're going to go with both. Is to, uh, instead of rewriting all the NRG, NRGHPZ stuff into CEE, we just cite it. So if, if, you know, it says, CE shall meet the requirements of section blah, blah, blah in the NHRPZ. That means you have to have the open space. And then if there's other things you like. It could be done by citation, which means it's a lot shorter. So that's another way to do it and without getting too long.
Okay. Good point.
Well, I, 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 I do, I mean, just from the historic preservation angle and from the. And from the land preservation angle, you know, I mean, um, I feel like the. The estate bylaw. Um, is written to, to a very particular kind of issue that, um. I think, I think its moment may have passed a bit. I mean, you know, I don't know. I mean, the, uh. The, 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 the number of properties that are actually like, you know, of, of, that, that, that fall under the definitions. Of that bylaw, um, are, 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 are relatively few. Um, you know, there are big things on the horizon, like, you know, I mean. God forbid Tanglewood ever decides to, you know, like do something different with its property. Um, um, and, you know, but, but I mean, but I mean, by, by and large, you know, we're, 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 we're. You know, I mean, that era of, 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 of the big estates and Stockbridge is. Is, is, is a century ago. I mean, I'm not saying that we shouldn't be fighting for, you know. The preservation of those places, but you know. Write a check, you know?
I mean, I, to add to Carl's comment, Jeff, I would say that. Um, when the cottage era state, so I'm sure you know that the zoning review committee recommended rescinding it. Um. And when the cottage era state bylaw was drafted. It was a very different time. And nobody ever envisioned. Um, you know, conglomerates, corporations. Uh, coming in. I mean, I couldn't keep track of who owned Elm Court, you know, did it go, which country did it go back to and so on? Nobody envisioned.
One, it was only one, Kate.
Okay, I'm just gonna finish.
I wish it had been more.
Can I finish? Thank you. Um, nobody envisioned the kind of sort of massive resort development that we have seen in this area. Um, on these properties. That was, was definitely not the intention there. So. Um, you know, I just put that out there as information for you.
Patrick, do you still have your hand up?
Sorry, yes, uh, just a couple of points. One. Um. Look. The devil's going to be in the details here. If you start talking about cottage era plus a reduction from eighty acres to twenty acres. You're going to open up a whole lot of parcels in town to mixed use. I'm just, I, look, I'm not, I'm not inherently for or against what you guys are talking about. I'm just telling you every time. There's a special event at Tanglewood or the Potato Garden throws a concert or. Anybody does anything in these neighborhoods, Monday morning, the phone is ringing and, and the residents are complaining. I mean, you should have seen Monday, there's a wedding in Tanglewood on Saturday. And people just get livid at the noise and you start talking about mixed use. And whether or not some of it could be by right or not by right, or how much oversight there's going to be, and I'm telling you like it. You know. It, 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 it. It, it's going to be something that I think frankly, at least politically, I don't know if you want a political calculation. I think it makes it harder for both of these to pass or both of these to fail. If you, if you love them all together because there's real questions around. The details of, look at the use table around cottage era. You know, and, and there's a whole lot of things you can do and you start combining that with smaller parcel sizes and, and. It's going to be, you know. Folks already don't like the special permits and entertainment licenses and stuff that a lot of. Uh, you know, that I've supported, you know, for, for our nonprofits. I'm just telling you, there's, there's pushback against that. And you start talking about kind of doing it so that. You know. Uh, I, I just, I just think you gotta just really think it through is all I'm saying.
So. Yes, Jeff.
I, just in response to Patrick, um, you, you can have two different size thresholds for NHRPZ if you say set that at. Twenty to forty acres and you can have a higher size threshold for CEE applicability.
But you, you could, Jeff, but if we leave it at eighty.
You put that at sixty or eighty, um. You know.
If you leave it at eighty, Jeff, we're talking about one property. I talked to Pat Sheehan too, when I was elected. Okay, and I told him and, and I believe Roxanne and, and, uh, and Chuck would echo this. That he'll get a fair hearing if and when he ever decides to come back. But, you know, honest, honestly, you know, you know, you either lower the threshold. And you have a vision that you want mixed use all over town, or you leave it like it is and you're basically kind of. Playing with bylaws for one, for one property, and I honestly. I honestly don't. You know. The, I don't think the political climate's the same as it was three or four years ago. I don't think that. Uh, you know, I, I don't know what happened. I wasn't on the board then. All I know is that. Anybody who comes to us now with the current board is going to get a fair hearing. And, and I don't know what else we can promise them, you know. Uh, doing bylaws to get around the authority of the boards, I personally think is kind of a bad idea.
I did. Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I would.
Would you like me to rescind my motion?
Yeah, you can, Marie.
Yeah.
Would you like me to rescind it? Do you feel we're not ready to vote on it?
I think we're not, um, but I do think that what this conversation suggests is. That we need to dust off or. Um, retrieve, uh, the last, the latest draft of Jeff's. Redo of the cottage era state bylaw. And put it on an agenda for a subsequent meeting to, um, think about. As a. Uh, in, in terms of its content and its effect. And, uh, at some point. in terms of its content and its effect. And at some point during those discussions also with respect to, does it stand alone or does it, with cross references as Jeff suggested, or does it get attached?
Okay, I, I will rescind that motion. But I do feel that we really need to address the cottage era bylaw, however we want to do it, as we address this bylaw. I, I think whether they become two separate things is one thing, but we need to do it. We need to just get it done.
I, I, I back you up entirely. And I feel that your instinct, Marie, about like actually sort of trying to, trying to, trying to merge these things and do something, something streamlined might actually be a good solution. And like Patrick says, the devil is in the details, but the, but I, I do feel like there's a real, you know, there's a real, there's a real possibility for doing something.
Marie, again.
I don't, I don't mean to streamline, streamline this, and I don't mean to not look at every aspect. I just think we need to make a decision whether we're gonna deal with the, with the cottage era bylaw now. You know, because we do this, first we are, then we're not, then we're not. I think we need to make, to look at it, decide, see what Jeff comes up with and really make a decision as to how we're gonna address this, because we need to address it. We really do. And, you know, I'm not trying to streamline it or make this go quick. I just feel we're treading water here. I think we need to make some decisions.
Yep. Shall I, shall I send the, the version of where the CE was at when I quit with it?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'll, I'll do that. I'll, I'll send it to you, Bill, and then you can get it.
And do we, I don't think we, we never voted on Marie's motion, so her rescinding it doesn't need to be voted on. She's just.
Right.
She just withdrew it.
Correct.
Hey, Bill?
Yes, Patrick.
When I raised my hand, it was to recommend a few of their names. Dave Rothstein, who, who built White Pines and worked with Mary Flynn and John Bianco and the third board member who escapes to you now, still lives down in South Eggermont, I think, or Sheffield, one of those. June Wolf manages a construct, manages Pinewood. You have local folks, including people like Gary Johnson and the Andrews, who are large landholders here. So I think that talking to folks other than just one developer that we all know is kind of like on our minds. There's other perspectives. If you're gonna start inviting folks, that would really encourage you guys to, you know, broaden, we invite.
Yeah, that's a very good point, Patrick. I think we should do that. Can you send me those names?
I absolutely can.
Thank you. Kate?
I thank you. Yeah, I would also just add that we do have a number of developments right in town. And I think it would be valuable to pick a few and for board members to visit them. And then potentially discuss, you know, what, what would actually be done differently with the, with Jeff's bylaw?
What are the, Kate, what are the ones we have in town?
Well, we've got Stone, Stone Hill, Stone Ridge, White Pines, there's a subdivision off Hawthorne Road.
What about Campion Farms off of, off of Glendale Road?
That's Stone Ridge. That's been renamed to Campion Farms, but I know it's Stone Ridge. Let's see, what else? Gary, Carl, help me out here.
And then there's also like, you know, I mean, things that aren't necessarily developments, but just, you know, just invading the woods. You know, like, you know, I mean, like what's going on down in like Glendale, Middle Road and so forth. I mean, you know, I mean, maybe most of that's in West Stockbridge or something. But, but I, I just, I, 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 you know, it's sort of, you know, the landscape gets eaten up piecemeal. But
Jeff? And Kate, does it make sense, your idea of visiting some of these places, doing it with Jeff and killing two birds with one stone?
Definitely. Yeah.
Yeah. So I, I will work with Jeff and get some dates when he could come and spend the better part of a day here. And I'll share those with all of you and we'll see if we can figure out a date that works for many of us. There's an issue about, unfortunately, the public meeting law. Yeah, we, if, if four of us pile into a van with Jeff, we, we can sit around with tape over our mouths, but that's about all we can do.
Well, you could just post it as a, as a public meeting.
Yeah. And then have some other people want to, want to squeeze into the van. It, it gets a little awkward. I'm not saying we can't do it, Kate. And I, I want to do it because I think it's gonna be valuable for Jeff and for us. We just need to be aware of the circumstances and work within the.
Well, I think that, I'm sorry, are you finished?
Yes.
Okay. I think that because these are just local site visits within Stockbridge, what we could do is post it the way we post any other meeting. And we don't all have to pile in a van together. We could just go to the sites and then get out and look around and, and have a conversation.
Yeah, if there are four of us hanging around having a conversation, that's, that's a problem.
Not if we post it as a public meeting. I'm suggesting just post it as a regular planning board meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Come does it all the time. They post their site visits.
We probably, we probably wouldn't be mobbed.
No, I agree with you. In fact, it would be weird if anybody else showed up, but I get the point. And maybe that is the solution. Post for local visits.
I think the advantage of doing that is that people who are interested in attending will feel like they're included. And I think that's a really good thing.
Yes, I agree. Before we finish, because I see it's 8:30, Jeff sent me this afternoon a draft number eight of the zoning bylaw. We're not talking about it today because I only got it this afternoon and I knew if I distributed it, no, nobody, including me, would have read it and it wouldn't have been fair to possess it. But I, I will ensure that it gets distributed to the, to the group and posted on the website. One quite, one request while I have you, Jeff, is you still got the September 16th date, which is the date of the draft number seven. If you could change the date as well as the, the draft number, you've already changed draft number to eight. That would help.
Well, I, I, yeah, there was a little, a little mix up there. We met on the 14th. And I think we made a few changes while we were meeting to that draft.
Yeah.
And then, and then on the 16th, two days later, I finished making some, some quick changes, all with respect to what we talked about on the 14th. And, and then I called that eight. So the date is correct. It's, it's still 9/16. I haven't done any substantive work after that.
Oh, okay.
But it is eight because it's, it's different than seven. So
Yes.
So that's, that's what we should look at. And, and we only got about halfway through. So we, we need to get the rest of the way through that.
Right.
We're going line by line and and then we had to break last time. So we should probably do that next time.
Yep.
And then, now I'll also send you the CE and I'll also send you the conservation analysis from Swallow Rise. You guys have tons of stuff to look at.
Great.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Well, that would be great. Are there any other questions, comments, issues to raise before we adjourn? I don't see any hands going up. I don't understand. Okay.
Some more.
Yes. Is there a second? Second?
Second.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you very much. Thanks, everybody. Thanks, Jeff.
It was a really, it was a really, it was a really good conversation. Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
Night.
Thank you, John.
Night.